In progress.
This is a regular meeting of the board of trustees to order on Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. It's 3:30 PM. Royal Asher and Angelman.
Here.
We have a please quiet in service and a number of two esteemed guests. I'd like to ask everyone to join on our quick.
Let me dispute the flag of the United States of America and it's a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, guys. I'd like to remind everyone, the meeting is being recorded with public and persons commenting must come at the podium to use the microphone stating their name and address to whoever.
Anyone personal there, do you know?
Look on the bound.
How is that to happen? There it is.
Switch on the chair. Okay, he's dead.
There you go. I'm not saying.
Words not.
Wait a minute, do you know more tech than him?
Smashing.
Um.
Is it on in the podium? Is the green light on at the podium?
Yes, it looks like, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Looks like we have one set of minutes. September 9th.
The agenda.
There was a special few, wasn't there?
Was there? That was pretty a moment.
It's good.
Cause my 23 and 17.
Yeah.
10-2 was special.
Was it 9-2, you said?
10-2.
10-2.
10-2. And the other is September 9th?
September 23rd.
23rd.
She sent it on Sunday.
Okay. All right, I move to approve the minutes for the September 23, 2025 regular trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Asher, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve the minutes for the October 10-2, 2025 special trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Angelman, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will abstain.
Okay. Um. Thanks to Rich, we took care of the bills last week, so let's go ahead and uh. Our first guest this evening is Denise Testa, Director of Medina County Department of Planning Services.
Before. Oh, go ahead.
Get started. Kristin, I think I gave you my agenda and did not get it back.
I did put it back over there, but you don't have it.
Did you?
But I don't, it's fine. But it's fine, it's fine.
Thank you. Thank you.
You all said?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, good deal. Am I supposed to turn this on or is it already?
It's on.
Okay. Uh, so thank you again for having me, although I think I'm gonna have to talk to the commissioners about um getting some of these chairs in our meeting rooms in the county building. They look pretty comfy, actually. Uh, so maybe we can do that for the November meeting, I don't know. Um, so again, thank you very much. My name is Denise Testa from Medina County Planning Services and Fair Housing, and I appreciate you allowing me to take an hour and a half of your time tonight. Uh, 10 minutes of your time tonight. Um, just to talk a little bit about some of the services that we offer through planning services to our local townships, as well as one of the lesser-known services, which is fair housing. And fair housing protects our residents when renting, buying, seeking housing assistance, applying for mortgage, or engaging in any housing-related activity. It prohibits discrimination based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, disability, as well as veteran status as well. You'll notice that there's one missing that I hope someday it'll be added, and that is senior citizens. As senior citizens are one of the fastest-growing populations of in poverty in our county, believe it or not, so um, I'm hoping someday we'll get senior citizens added. It is a free service. We're located in the county admin building in Suite 113. We help tenants understand their rights. We educate them about lease terms and responsibilities. We also create individualized plans, as well as offer workshops and training sessions. So in your packets, I've included a fair housing brochure. There are some tips for renters. The majority of our uh inquiries we receive in our office, and we've actually surpassed the number of inquiries as of right now compared to all of 2024. Uh, so, but the majority of our phone calls are related to repairs to rentals. What can someone do if their landlord perhaps is not making repairs? Um, one of their options is to ask them and and put it in writing, keep good records. Make the ask is always what we talk about. If the landlord is uh non-responsive, the next step might be to place your rent in escrow, which is where you place your rent in with the local municipal court, which will probably be, I believe, the Medina Municipal Court. Always make sure you pay your rent, but if you decide to uh place your rent in escrow, you send your landlord a certified letter, give them 30 days to make the repair. If they don't make the repair in 30 days, you go to the municipal court and you uh apply to put your rent in escrow. So you're paying the court, oops, I'm sorry, paying the court instead of your landlord. Um, we always recommend that that tenants contact us as we have resources that they that they can utilize. We also have resources for landlords as well. Um, as some landlords are, if they are not clear on the Fair Housing Act, or they have questions about um termination of leases, there are resources that we can forward to them um that are available to all residents and landlords that are online. Community Legal Aid has some great uh great resources for for our local landlords and tenants. Uh, we also again have tips for for renters, including um, you know, ensuring that you read your lease thoroughly, you understand the terms of your lease. Always purchase renters insurance. That protects your personal property. Even if there's a leak, if there's a leak in your your rental property, your personal belongings are not covered unless you have renters insurance. The landlord is not responsible to replace your personal belongings. Um, we also recommend that if a landlord needs access to your unit, they are required to give you 24-hour notice unless it is an emergency. Uh, we also, uh, again, as you uh go through the the brochure, um landlords, you know, are required to provide heat and running water, not air conditioning though, but if there is an air conditioning unit with the uh, the, if there is an air conditioning unit there within the uh location, they're required to make sure that it's in working order. Um, they also uh should provide trash removal if they own more than four units in a building. So again, understanding these mutual obligations can help avoid conflicts and provoke better housing outcomes. On the last page, we also have a number of um partners that we work with, including jobs and family services, uh services for um senior and adult services, as well as the Ohio Civil Rights Commission, Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority, Community Legal Aid, Medina Bar Association, uh Community Action, Wayne Medina. So again, these organizations can help with legal advice, which we are not able to give, so we are, we cannot give legal advice. We can only point them in the right direction to resources. They can also, in some cases, provide rental assistance. Um, and they can also um help you file a housing complaint if um you believe that you've just experienced discrimination. So again, whether you're a tenant, landlord, community partner, uh, we can help you, and I take appointments by phone, um conference calls, as well as teams. We also uh provide opportunities to meet in person, as some of our clients would rather meet in person rather by phone, and again, we're always willing to help as we um always give our clients, I like to call it homework when they leave, which some of them don't like homework. Um, but if they need follow-up, they're always welcome to follow up with us as well. Um, so moving on, what can uh planning services do for you? As many of you know that some of our services that we offer, um obviously, we we review minor and major subdivisions, but we also offer mapping and GIS services. Um Suzanne Peterlin has been a great partner with us. She's attended all of our zoning inspector meetings, and we very much appreciate her enthusiasm, as well as her expertise in zoning. Um, so we also offer uh mapping and GIS services where if you need your zoning map updated, or you want a watershed map, or you need a roadmap, um, you know, just give us a call and we'll see what we can do. Um, we're always open um to your uh requests. We also manage a number of grants, including the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, known as CHIP. And that is a home repair and home rehab program for income-qualifying individuals. In fact, I believe we have one client in Hinkley who's currently taking advantage of the 2023 CHIP grant. Um, and so we have applied for what's called program year 2025, which means that those monies or those funds will be, hopefully, if we receive the grant, available in mid to 26 to into 27. Um, so these are great programs that are complete grants, so if someone needs new windows, a roof, um perhaps some interior repairs, um the grant covers it again, as long as they're income-qualifying, and it is competitive. It's first come, per served. We also are in uh the process or looking forward to um applying for the program year 2026, CDBG, also known as Community Development Block Grant. I hire anyone who can say that really fast five times. Um, so our Community Development Block Grant uh is for uh uh income-qualifying individuals, again, low to moderate income um individuals, disabled adults. It could also uh provide slum and blight demolition. Um, so again, in Hinkley, I don't believe you have an LMI census block-defined area, so I know in the past we've um awarded you a a grant to um install the elevator in the Hinkley Historical Society Building. Um, we also have had other, and actually, there's a handout attached to the Community Development Program Sheet that outlines all of the CDBG grants that we have awarded since 2008. So if you see one there that you have questions about, uh we have, we'll have $300,000 available for three projects. Um, the application will be dispersed in 2026, and I always, as you probably know, I like email, so some of you probably get more emails from me than you want. Um, but I will email um the the application when it becomes available, and we're looking for big grants this year. Um, so again, with $300,000 and three grants, that's on average, I'm sure we can figure that out, even though I'm not a math major, um, what the average, you know, grant is. Um, so again, if you're interested in a grant, or there's something that that you think might fit your township, give me a call and we'll talk through it and see if it's eligible for CDBG. Um, so we also uh again offer planning and zoning workshops. We just wrapped our last one up, our CAUV uh workshop this past month, so we'll start those up again uh in January. Um, and then I'm actually going down to the Ohio Township Association um to attend one of their zoning workshops, and I believe some of our zoning inspectors will be attending with me, so I'm excited about that. Um, we're also working on the Medina County Fair Ground Strategic Plan, um, which is a county commissioner initiative, so you'll be hearing more about that in the future. And uh and then finally, we also offer advisory report reports. So if you have an issue in your township that you're trying to solve, whether it be planning-related, zoning-related, land use-related, you know, give us a call and we can um complete some research for you and uh and uh provide you with like a white paper to maybe provide you with some information and some resources regarding that that issue. So with that in mind, are there any questions from anyone? Either I talked really fast, or I provided you uh with way too much information, so.
Or the items available in here to, if a resident has an issue and wants to come, you call them a client. There there's no cost for you?
No, it is completely free.
And you basically help them navigate the waters, is that?
Exactly, yes. And and like I said, even if, again, the majority of our phone calls are repairs to rentals, which are not necessarily of considered a fair housing case. However, every client that calls our office leaves with information, whether it's a fair housing case or not. Um, so if they believe they've experienced discrimination, that's a whole nother kind of roadmap that we're gonna take. If there is no discrimination, we still have resources for them to access and consider as they're navigating whatever issue they may have at that point.
Is is all the contact info available through your website as well?
Yes, it is, it is. And I just added actually some landlord um resources on our website as well, because again, our land, you know, tenants aren't discriminating against landlords. I mean, that and that's what fair housing is. That's what we we um mediate or mitigate. However, our landlords also need support, so we we're trying to provide them with a little bit more information um than we have in the past. But uh, but yes, we call, we do call them clients, so because they come from all different portions of the county, and we're a countywide office. So they can just cut, they can just give me a call, and actually, my contact information is on the front of the brochure, so email and phone number.
Okay.
For the CDBG?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Oh, you're hired.
I only said it once. And I don't think I could do it.
That's all right. You got 20%.
Um. That is coming up relatively soon, right?
It is, it is. And so that's why if you have a project in mind, not only um planning, if you're planning to apply, but also if there are um expenses, um you know, with budgets, for example, the CDBG does not cover the engineering costs. Um, so if you need to obtain a quote for a a new sidewalk or or something, like something for a disabled, removing a barrier for a disabled adult, you would have to, you know, finance that portion of the grant um upfront. Because we need a, when when we receive um grant applications, we need a, an engineered estimate. An engineer's ups estimate, I guess, is the best way to put it. So if you're thinking about a bridge or something like that, you know, let me know.
We're all out of bridges over here, but I do have an idea of something that we could do.
Okay, I don't.
Oh, good, I do.
Okay, because I did that two years ago, and then we ended up doing partial anyway, so.
That's right, because you applied for the the bathroom, the restrooms, yeah.
Well, it was not sufficient.
Right, right.
Close to 100,000, and then we did part of it with the flooring, so now I would have to find something to supplement that. Some other restrooms, I don't know if there's any others right now that I can think of.
Right, we do a lot of roads, we do sidewalks. Um, Montville, actually, that's another good example. Cobblestone Park, they had gravel um walkways, and so again, their disabled adults had, who had mobility issues could not navigate those gravel walkways, and so we, as the CDBG program, was able to pave over those gravel walkways, so it, we can't create you know, like a pathway for disabled, but if there's, if we're removing a barrier, that's the key with the disabled adults. And then there's a slum and blight as well, so we've had a couple of slum and blights. We had one, I think, in 2022, but we didn't have any in '24.
Super. Anything else?
Um, so.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
For coming out.
Oh, sure.
I said too short.
You have to come up to the podium.
Oh.
Or you can pass the microphone back to yourself, but.
Um, okay, name and all that, that's okay. Uh, John Kales, Ridge Road. Um, so just a quick question, I guess. The first one is, are there any caveats that come with the community? Let me, let me get it. Community Development Block Grants?
What do you mean?
Uh, just associate, I know, you know, I'm somewhat familiar with grants that happen. Are there any other strings attached, I guess?
Oh, okay, so um other than we just have to be in compliance with the grant, so, but the county or my office manages the grant. So for example, when we go out to bid, we have to pass a commissioner resolution authorizing us to go out to bid. If we accept a, and in some cases, the the partnering jurisdiction or the township also may pass um a resolution or an ordinance uh authorizing us to go out to bid, or if we're accepting a contract or awarding a contract. Um, we have to have inspection services, and so those are the kinds of items that again, depending on the project, what I guess strings attached as you're defining them are, but we help you navigate that as the administrator of the grant.
But okay, but there's no other, like, there's no hoops for us to jump through other than the ones that you kind of.
Correct. I mean, and we actually, and that's part of our process, is when we review the grant applications, we are saying, yes, this is a CDBG-eligible grant, and then the commissioners will decide who, how the money is dispersed. So all the applications we get, we certify that they're eligible for CDBG, then the commissioners decide who gets the grant and how much.
Okay, and whatever their process is, the decision, whether it's ranking or however they go.
Right, right. It's usually a conversation.
Gotcha.
They don't like to use ranking sheets.
I, okay. There's some other organizations that love, that love ranking.
Yeah, those rubrics.
Yes. Uh, so my second question, uh, we're talking about fair housing right now. And and a very popular topic that is coming up across the country, and especially here locally, is affordable housing. And I was just going to ask you if you could please define what affordable housing means to Medina County and the fair housing.
It depends on who you talk to.
Okay, just as far as Medina Counties, in as far as your offices.
I mean, from a HUD perspective, HUD says that um affordable housing is defined as a rent or mortgage that is 30% or less than the total earnings of the homeowner or the tenant. So that's HUD's description or definition of affordable housing. Fair housing and affordable housing are not the same thing. They are completely against. Fair housing protects against discrimination. Affordable housing is is more of a financial, again, HUD-defined process or 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 entity, but it depends on who you talk to on what affordable housing is.
So it's not necessarily.
There's, it's very difficult to define, in my opinion.
Like a median, whatever the median home price is for a community like Hinkley.
John.
Right, so.
Yeah, I think.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's 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 very subjective. It's not objective, and there's not a number that I can give you. This is what it is in Brunswick, this is what it is in Hinkley, this is what it is in Montville. I mean, it's very subjective, though, and it depends on who you talk to.
So everyone is aware, we ask you to come up to the podium because uh Judy takes meeting minutes, and she takes them remotely, and the only way she can hear you is if you are at a microphone.
Sorry, Judy. Uh, okay, so so if we are to be met with any um propositions or or conversation of affordable housing in the future, what you're telling me is that we should uh find out whatever that agency or entity's definition is and you know, work from that point forward. Thank you very much.
Right, but I do not have a definition for you. But I didn't recommend what you just said. You recommended it. Ask the agency what they're, I I didn't recommend that. However, the person that you are talking to at the time defines affordable housing, that is up to them.
We need to be very careful, that is all.
Uh, I agree. I agree, and there's affordable housing, then there's low-income housing. Those are two different things as well.
Do, is you are signing?
Oh, do I have another? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, uh, just real quick, it's about the um, the the repairs to units. Um, who ultimately adjudicates those to, are, yeah, that's a repair that needs to be made, or no, you're kind of off the reservation on this one. Like, if it's, if it's a, if it's a non-functioning ceiling fan, do they withhold rent as opposed to, okay, my roof blew off?
Repair to rental?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And that question came from Matt Marzullo.
Right, I know Matt.
No, it's for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was like, yeah.
It's for everybody else.
So in terms of the repairs to rentals, um, you know, I am not aware of any kind of regulation that says which uh repairs are more important than others. So um obviously, if it, if you've got water running down your wall or something, that's an emergency, you repair, or you don't have heat in the winter, which we've had several clients call us in the middle of winter. However, if, you know, the lease terms, most of the time will have, you know, if if it's connected into the house or the the rental unit, it is supposed to be in working order. And if it's a fan that's not working, and and they've asked several times, and it's been several months, then they can certainly um uh apply to put their rent in escrow. It's really, it is an application to the court. How the court processes that and determines it is up to the court. Are there any other? Did you have a question? Did you raise your hand before?
It's much less incendiary than.
Okay.
These two, but.
Sure, no problem. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
No, it's it's easy. Uh, Jim Larson, 20 Car Road. I was just curious, does your office ever get involved in the resol, any resolutions relative to squatting complaints either by the tenant or by the owner, and do you list that, just let that go to the courts to be resolved, or do you interject yourselves to?
Uh, we have not had any squatting questions or circumstances in our office. I have done some research on that, and I do understand what the process is for Ohio. Um, Ohio, um, but it, but I would have to review it. I didn't review it before I came, and I did that research about two years ago, so I do have some information if you are interested in it. But um, but I have not had any phone calls or inquiries regarding squatters.
Well, Denise, I knew you were coming for like three months and.
Yikes.
They've been, they've been waiting.
Okay, good. Any other? I'm good. Okay, thank, thank you again.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, Denise.
Absolute, don't forget your umbrella.
It looks like a Mary Poppins convention over there.
Our next guest is Kristen Trolley.
Yep.
From Cleveland Metro Parks, Director of Rents.
I'm gonna try to share my screen to share a map, if that works.
May not stop with her when she's, she's never, never mind.
Oh, is it working? Oh, there it goes.
Didn't hit the wrong button.
Okay. No, I'm trying. Oh, there you go. Hi, again, my name's Kristen Trolley. I'm the Grants Director at Cleveland Metro Parks. Thank you for having me today. Um, I just wanted to take a minute and share with you a recent Clean Ohio Conservation Fund application that we submitted um on behalf, uh behalf of Cleveland Metro Parks to District 9 UNRAC, which includes Medina and Lorraine Counties. So we are looking to um acquire the Harrison property. So you can see it right there, outlined in the hashed line. It's right on Ledge Road, adjacent to Hinkley Reservation. Uh, Ledge Pool and Ledge, um, it's right next to Ledge Pool and Ledge Lake Recreation Center to kind of orient everybody. Um, so the parcel is 18 and a half acres. Um, it was appraised at, and we are purchasing it for $735,000. And we're interested in this property. A, you can see that it's right next to Hinkley Reservation, and it makes sense to become part of our, our parkland. B, it'll serve as a great buffer for for Ledge Lake and Ledge Pool. If that was developed, it would be kind of suffocating to that really popular recreation area there. And then um, lastly, but not leastly, there is really great natural resources value to the property. So if you see the map, I guess that would be on the right, the map on the right, the property's outlined there in red. Um, and the blue shades, the dark blue in particular, and the light blue are all areas near the property that are of high natural resources value. So the property contains two small tributaries to Johnson's Creek. And Johnson's Creek is one of our priority watersheds in Cleveland Metro Park, so it has great, high natural resources value, has great biodiversity, it has um protected populations of the West Virginia White Butterfly and the Queen Snake, and so protecting these headwater tributaries is really serving as a buffer for that really high-quality watershed. Um, right now, the property is agricultural fields. Um, is it gonna come up? There you go. It's a agricultural field with a forested buffer, so after acquisition, we plan to allow that forested buffer to kind of enlarge itself and some natural regeneration of native plants and native seeds that are in the soil, so um I mean, that that's really it. We are here, you know, asking for support from the township and a letter of support for our application to Clean Ohio. We think it would be a great addition to to our Hinkley Reservation. And then, here I guess, so we are ask the um, the fee simple acquisition price is 735,000. We're asking for 440 of it from Clean Ohio and putting in 304,000 of a cash match towards the project, so we are invested in this project as well.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, of course.
There were two uh tributaries in Johnson Creek on that property.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just looking at the, you know, GIS map, and I'm not really seeing where they might be, and considering it's being farmed, I'm just curious.
They're up. Um, let's see, they're up in this, they're up in the two corners, so there's one that comes in right here, and there's one that comes in right under this arrow here.
So is it like underground?
Um, no, this one is like, this corner right here is all forested right now, and if you were looking at like a, an aerial photograph, you could see the tributary coming in. This one's a little bit harder to see. Um, it's a little bit fainter if you're looking at the hydrology, but ground truthing, it's it's there.
Okay, cause I I pulled up the county GIS map and um layered in the streams, rivers, and the riparian setbacks, and actually, they there's none present on the GIS map, on that parcel, like they seem to end at that top right corner.
Oh, okay, I can see if I can pull up another map while I'm sitting here.
The GIS that ends at the um at the adjoining parcel, it's not, it doesn't go on to the.
It doesn't show that it goes on, and the other one looks like it bypasses it and goes some parcels, residential parcels that are to the left to the. left to the corner that's forested. So I'm just, I'm just curious, where are those?
Um, I can pull up another map while I'm here if you want.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Can you give me a moment?
Well, no.
Um, let me see. I might, trying to.
Is this a property the Metro Parks sees a need to acquire? Is it? Or what was driving the desire to purchase this land?
Um, I mean, really, it's adjacency to the park. And really, it's buffer to, I mean, we wouldn't want to see development in this corner of the park. If we saw development here, you would be developing right at the uppermost reaches of the Johnson's Creek sub watershed, which is not where you want to see development because then those impervious surfaces is what affects everything downstream. So being at the corner of, of where everything is, we wouldn't want to see development of that, that parcel at all. I don't know if this one's any better, but I can try.
What would the, you would, I'm assuming, have a plan that you would be doing something with that land, eighteen acres, that you're not just going to? Would that be incorporated into part of the parks?
Oh, for sure, yeah. It would be incorporated into part of the parks for any future master planning efforts. For the foreseeable future, it would be invasive plant control and allowing natural regeneration of what's there. Perhaps, you know, planting some of the forest edges a little bit. It may, we may look at adding like a bit of a better entrance to Ledge Lake in the south eastern corner of the parcel, but it wouldn't be developed in terms of like paving things and building pavilions or anything like that. We see a need for possibly a new entrance in the southeastern corner, but the rest of it would just remain as, as natural lands.
Why, why is there a need for a new entrance?
Just because of congestion over there right now that's happening with Ledge Lake. It would be just kind of opening it up and a little bit better for, for traffic flow and pedestrian flow. I can pull that up.
I'm pretty familiar with that area, I've just never made that one's the traffic.
Right.
For there.
I think it's just to open that area up a little bit. And so I can, I have this aquatic resources map, but it's, it's super faint as well. And I mean, it's so small on here that I don't know if I can, if you'll be able to see it on here either. Share. You can't. So here's the one coming in here, do you see it?
I'm just going to get up and walk it.
Sorry. I know, I don't, I guess I could try to zoom this, huh? Then. So you can see the one coming in here.
Oh, I see it right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other one comes in here, it doesn't show up on the hydrology, but there's the one coming. And the other one comes in under where this red line is right there.
So piggyback on, on your question, what the entrance, how would that be perceived? I'm just curious.
Well, hold on, let me pull this up a little bit. Everyone gets to watch me maneuver my computer.
No stress.
Right, so I, if we did a new entrance, it would kind of be like through here on this section.
And then right around?
Yeah. So this whole part up there would stay.
Okay, so would there be an impact to the residences here?
No.
Like they would be getting extra traffic?
No, I can try to pull that one up too.
Because like the entrance here, it's all your land that is on either side of the entrance, so it's buffer.
Ledge Pool sketch. I'm glad I have my computer. Zoom. Share. There you go. So you could see the thick red line.
Okay.
Kind of bringing it around in that section of the thing. Nothing set in stone on that, so if there's a need to, to come back and chat more about that, we can too. But that's kind of was our, our rough concept, as you could see with, it's still in. Yeah. This one is Ledge Road.
Got it, thank you.
The property is off of Ledge Road, the address is on Ledge Road, yeah. I'm going to pull a map back up, are there any other questions?
So you are looking for a letter of support?
Yes, from township, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I thank you for coming.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
I, I very much appreciate, I, I think the board appreciates the excellent relationship that we've always had with the Metro Parks. I think that communication has always been good between.
Yeah.
Between the Metro Parks and the township. So I think that the Metro Parks adds a lot of appeal to the township, having Hinkley Lake, I love it, I'm there all the time. Um, that being said, to the best of my knowledge, the Metro Parks currently owns about twenty percent of the land in Hinkley. So that is twenty percent of the land that we are not collecting taxes on. And I would have a hard time supporting any additional land being owned by the Metro Parks, simply because I don't think it's fair to our residents. I don't think it's fiscally responsible. As the Metro Parks gets larger, the township is really forced to adapt to the Metro Parks. It is a use of our resources, our police department, our fire department, our roads. And I don't feel that that is necessarily fair to our residents, that they're kind of really picking up a lot of that slack. Um, I hope that our, our relationship continues to be a positive, open relationship. But at the end of the day, I feel that our responsibility is to our residents, it is to our employees to make sure that we are using our funds wisely.
I mean, my, my response to that would be, we do have our own police force. So we have our own Cleveland Metro Parks police force that maintains that. And I will say, though, that the residents of Hinkley Township have always voted in favor, though, too, of supporting Cleveland Metro Parks by, you know, a great majority. So I do think we bring a lot of benefit and we have, you know, economic benefit studies that show how much economic benefits actually the parks bring to a community in terms of increases in property value, stormwater management, air pollution control, recreation benefits, and it equates to a hun, over a hundred and eighty-three million dollars a year just in economic benefits to lands adjacent to the parks. So I do think we bring, I, I one hundred percent, you know, hear your opinion, but I feel like it's my job to rebut as I'm standing up up here as well. Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And that is, I hope that you're not taking away that I don't see the value.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
I completely see the value of the Metro Parks. And I know that you do have your own police department.
Right, right.
They're not stationed in Hinkley. They, they go to several different metro.
Right.
Not just Hinkley, they're in New York County as well. And I know just from our experience on the police department, that our police are often first to respond.
Oh, but I mean, I can't speak to that.
To any kind of accident, our, our fire department, our paramedics are always
Sure.
being utilized, which I think we're happy, we're happy to provide that service to the Metro Parks and to our residents and to our guests who utilize the Metro Parks.
Those are the same concerns I heard, maybe that I discussed this, but because we're coming to the meeting today was, it's, it's basically an erosion of our tax base, the more Metro Parks grows, the less taxes we're taking to support the community. And it, it's, it's a tough thing, but that's why I said, was there a need for it or was it just nice to have?
Sure.
You know, if, if there was some critical need to expand the Metro Park at this part, basically at this point, it would be something else to consider, but.
I mean, for sure, for us in terms of our mission is conservation. And so preservation of green space is at the core of our mission. So for us, you know, we want to preserve the green space rather than see it be developed because that's in align with our mission and, you know, and that's what we do to bring additional services to the community with, you know, everything that we offer is free. The spillway is free, you know, Hinkley Lake is free, fishing opportunities are free. You do have to pay to run a, a stand-up paddleboard, but you have to do that anywhere, you know. So everything that we offer to the community is, is free. All the trails are maintained year-round through the winter time. You know, we plow our own roadways, everything is, is maintained. And Hinkley Lake will be open again to the public in May. It's actually filling right now. And with the rain today, it might be filling actually kind of fast. So you know, everything that we provide to the community is free. And I mean, Hinkley Lake in itself was a, or the dam was a ten million dollar project. And, you know, we're investing in trails around there, new docks then on the lake. We're seeking funding for a new concession and restroom building right there at the spillway. And so, you know, everything that we've been doing for the, the community is free of charge. And we do think that brings a great value to the community. And we have won the national gold medal for best park district in the nation five times now. And you're not going to see that in any other, you know, park system in Ohio. So I think that, you know, it's, it's a great asset for the community.
I agree, and I think the community is very with you. I do just want to point out that I would not necessarily say it's free because you did just pass a levy
Sure.
a couple of years ago.
Right, right.
I, I would not consider that free.
Sure.
That our taxes are going into that.
Right, I, yes, that is, that is definitely true. But we do not pay to play. You do not have to pay entrance fees like you do for some other parks. You do not have to, you know, pay to fish on Hinkley Lake like you do at some other parks. You do not have to pay the, right.
Because that's like saying, hey, we plowed your roads for free.
Well, right, but I mean, you know, most park districts are paid for by, you know, a tax levy, for sure, definitely, yeah. But.
So has the Metro Parks already entered into a purchase agreement with this property?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Mm-hmm. You have to enter into the purchase agreement to apply for the Clean Ohio. You can't apply without.
Agreement contingent upon you receiving the grant? Or will Metro Parks acquire that property regardless of whether you receive that grant or not?
That I don't know, I'd have to go back and look in, in the purchase agreement. It, we do them both ways. It depends on, it depends on the purchase price of the property and, and what our budget and stuff is looking for. So I don't know what the details of this one are, but I can let you, I can get back to you and let you know on that one. But we've done them both ways with different properties. But you have to have all that signed and inked before Clean Ohio will even look at your application.
Okay, so, okay, I guess, I don't know if that answered my question. So if you don't get the grant, it, whether the purchase agreement is contingent upon the grant or whether you're, it's an actual purchase agreement and now you're looking to, you know, just get some money to help pay for that.
Yeah, I'd have to go, I'd have to talk to our real estate team and see what the terms of that purchase agreement are and I can get back with you on that one.
And you've already submitted the grant application?
We did, yeah.
So do you, so you still are looking for a letter from us? I mean.
Sure, I mean, as, as Ms. Asher said, I mean, we, we love the relationship and the open communication with the township. So we wanted to share the project, being that it's, it's within your, your boundaries, so, yes.
Similarly, it was asked earlier, are there any strings attached with that grant money that you're going to get from Clean Ohio?
Um, there are deed restrictions that would prevent development of the majority of the parcel. Like you could put a pavilion or a trail or something, you know, like that on the property. You couldn't pave it over and build a roller skating rink or an ice rink or, or any kind of recreation activities like that. So its primary purpose is for conservation.
So you'd be allowed to still put a drive on there?
Yep, a small drive, yeah.
Restrictions are very particular.
Yeah, you could put a small drive on because of it's taking up such a small footprint of the property. If it was like a two-acre property and you were covering an acre of it with a drive, you know, then they would have a, a problem with it. But given that it's a small percentage of the property's footprint, you can do that, for sure. Yeah, they allow for small parking lots and, and small access drives and paved trails and stuff like that. As long as it's a, a smaller footprint on the property.
Well.
I think we'd probably like to know if the, if the purchase is continued.
Okay, for sure. Yeah, I can do that and then I can email you back. I have your email address with that information, okay?
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you for sharing.
Any other questions?
Unless somebody else wants to go, I don't, please. I would love for someone else to go first. I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm Tom Trader, Walden Ridge. Is there, has there been any, whether or not in Hinkley or anywhere where the Metro Parks has decided to do something to offset that loss in tax revenue to townships? I mean, recently, we lost a golf course to you guys.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's speculation that Hinkley Hills is next. So those are big parcels that have a lot of land value that generate a lot of tax revenue. So has, has, has the Metro Parks ever said, hey, we're, we're kind of taking advantage of this particular region and we should do something to help them?
You mean financially?
Absolutely, I mean financially.
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm also not our CFO or anyone in our finance department that could speak to that. I mean, I know that we hold the value of the parks as a, you know, asset for the community. But no, I, I don't, I don't think so, but.
Maybe consideration.
Yeah, but I, I don't know.
So folks like these guys can say, well, maybe it's not as terrible as we think.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Not that the parks are terrible, because I think everybody enjoys them, but on Nick's point, you know.
Right, sure.
Where does it stop?
Yeah.
Right? And how much do we, as a township, lose? It's a lot, so, thanks.
Especially with the tax reform conversations that are happening right now.
Sure, and I think everybody's scared of that a little bit, yeah.
Richard Pearl, so Johnson Creek is different from Johnson Run that runs into the Hinkley Lake?
No, that's all the same thing.
That's all the same.
Yeah, Johnson's Creek.
And you mentioned great diversity.
Mm-hmm.
Have you ever done an amphibian study there?
Um, I don't know, I think so. I think our natural resources team have. I know I have bird data, dragonfly data and wildflower data. And we have our wildlife cameras set throughout there, but I'd have to check on amphibians.
So this is the stream that was recently restored?
Part of it, yep.
Yeah, as it gets closer.
Yep.
Twelve years ago until six years ago, we did a frog monitoring.
Oh, cool.
Study in ten different locations around Hinkley. And at the top by Kellogg's, by Kellogg's Road, there was some amphibians, but not many.
Okay.
But at the bottom, we never heard any amphibians.
Really?
No peepers, no green frogs, no tree frogs, no bullfrogs.
Okay. We do have Frog Watch, so we could, I could look at that data too and see if there's any monitoring locations down here.
What other biodiversity studies have been done on it?
Um, well, we have PCAP, which is our Plant Community Assessment Plots. And those have, we have randomized plots throughout the Metro Parks and they assess those every few years to kind of see how the plant communities are changing. And then we have bird point survey counts. I know that they've done the, like I said, the dragonflies and the butterfly surveys and wildlife cameras, which kind of capture anything that walks in front of it, from stray cats to people to.
So are you aware of any pollution in Johnson Creek?
It's a pretty high-quality watershed, the east branch, so it's a sub watershed of the east branch of the Rocky River. The east branch of the Rocky River as a whole is a pretty high-quality watershed. But when you're in an urban area, there's always something. You're always getting some road runoff and some, you know, something from somebody's lawn. So I don't think anything around here could be pristine. I'm not an aquatic biologist, but it is a high quality and, you know, within attainment of what Ohio EPA says of its water quality standards, so, yes.
And finally, historically, do we know who Johnson was?
I feel like I did at one point in time.
We've tried.
Did, nothing, you don't either, okay. I feel, yes, I feel like, I feel like, I feel like there is, there is something about him that our historian had done.
Oh, it's him?
At one point in time, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We can try to share that too, I mean, you guys can share that.
Mr. Pearl, after the meeting, could you please explain to Jack what peepers are and?
I didn't even know there were that many of them.
I think there's like fourteen native frog species around here, eighteen, something like that.
Spring peepers are the ones that wake you up in the spring.
Yeah.
And they're the first ones in the spring, in March, when, and they are a lot.
You'll know what it is, that's what a peeper is, yeah.
And you know what bullfrogs are. And then in between are chorus frogs, tree frogs.
I've heard of them.
Okay, there you go, all right. Maybe I should explain a little further.
We'll hold class at.
We, it must have been the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Now, like I said, twelve years ago, we would go out in March, April, May and June. Now, like I said, 12 years ago, we would go out in March, April, May and June. And for two minutes, record at two different, at 10 different sites. And then identify, did we hear two peepers? Did we hear 100 peepers or did we hear too many to count? Same thing with bullfrogs, et cetera. But Johnson's Run down where it came into Hinkley Lake, it was quiet always, nothing there, as if it was polluted.
Interesting, uh, so that's part of Frog Watch. So Frog Watch USA is like the national thing that takes, and so there's local chapters of Frog Watch.
They lost their funding, so it stopped six years ago.
But there is still Frog Watch.
There is.
Yes, yep.
And do you have volunteers?
Yes, you could become a Frog Watch volunteer.
Wow.
And you can count and you can turn in your sheet.
T-shirt.
No, no t-shirts.
There'll be a training in the winter, you have to take a test on all the sounds. I did it.
Okay, so John K. List again, it's going to be really hard um to follow a gentleman like Mr. Pearl. I mean, the the juxtaposition here is going to be remarkable. Um, so I guess my first question, we were talking about cameras and stuff and and we have all the wildlife camera. And on August 21st, um, at the Board of Commissioners meeting, there was talk about the AI cameras that are being used. And and you guys have property all over, right, Cuyahoga County, obviously Medina County. Edgewater is somewhere where I think there's been issues, there's been issues in more of the um, the Cleveland parks.
Uh huh.
Um, it was mentioned that AI is being used possibly for firearm detection. I I kind of get that a little bit, but it's also saying that AI is being, has a uh, AI cameras are detecting unwanted behavior from human visitors such as non-designated entry points into the park. And again, because Cleveland Metro Parks kind of weaves through Hinkley Township and it does abut a lot of private property. I was curious if you could provide any more insight into the the use, whether it's being used out here to monitor uh, the Metro Parks land and then by chance, people's private property.
AI or cameras?
AI and cameras.
Um, AI, I have no, I do not know the answer to that question.
Cameras is what they're using.
I mean, we do have cameras, we do have cameras at Edgewater, we do have cameras at entry points. We have mobile security cameras that go around to different events. Where they all are in Hinkley, I would be remiss if I tried to answer that. I can get those answers from our IT department and and let you know the answer to that. I I don't know, honestly. Um, I imagine that there will be some near the dam and then the spillway and some of those public places.
Sure.
Um, but I I don't know for sure, I'd have to get that answer for you.
Because, you know, is is they're saying that they're worried about people coming in through, not non entrances, right?
Yeah, right.
Kind of monitoring those other ones. So, you know, again, my first concern, like, and I'll say it, right? I'm not a guy that is anti-park, right? It's going to come across as that, but at the same time, I realize that the Cleveland Metro Parks are another form of government.
Sure.
And it is from Cuyahoga County and it has Cleveland in the name.
Right.
Right, and we are from, and we are in Medina County. And um, so I just want people to be aware of that, um, that there are measures that are being employed there. I know why you do it, um, I just want it to be, I guess, above grade for everyone.
Uh huh.
Um, my next question.
I can get the answers on the cameras, those I don't know. The cameras I was talking about before, the wildlife cameras, though, those are like on trees, on trails that capture like a coyote that might be passing or like otters that we've found or like things like that. So different than the people camera that you're speaking.
They came out and I asked them that question last time, it was before this.
AI stuff, yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't.
And they said that those cameras were pointed more towards the the site.
Right, exactly.
So you can look at those and then they were even like uh, like waypoints or whatever, where they would encourage you to take a picture.
Right, yeah, yep.
So, and they said that that was all facing in into the park property, not necessarily. So that was cool, right? And I saw this and I'm like, uh, maybe things.
Yeah, I can get answers, I don't, I don't know the answers from, that would be on our IT's security side of things and I don't know where that stands.
I I'm sure everybody would appreciate that, right?
Okay.
Um, also, so the next question, you you mentioned the deed restrictions that were going to be involved with the property over on. That there are deed restrictions.
Uh huh.
Uh, my question to you is, uh, what kind of, and I'll back it up with why, but what, you know, you guys have about 20%, I think is what Trusty Ashwell said of of Hinkley Township, um, under your control. Um, the deed restrictions that might exist with some of the golf courses, stuff like that. As as I watched the news that happens with the Cleveland Metro Parks, there was some property that was purchased down on the peninsula. It was a Scranton Peninsula.
Oh, sure, yep.
Right?
Yeah.
And what they wanted to do was, um, they pretty much wanted to put a bike trail along the water.
Yeah.
And after they had secured, I think it was 30 feet, put the bike trailer along the river, they determined that that land was no longer necessary for what they wanted to use it for. So they were looking at bringing developers in on the land that they had purchased, right, to start developing.
Right.
So when I go into the ORC, I find that the Board of Park Commissioners finds any land that has, it has acquired, are not necessary for the purposes for which they were acquired by the board. It may sell and dispose the lands upon terms the board considers advisable. The board may also lease or permit the use of any lands for purposes not inconsistent with the purposes which the lands were acquired and upon terms that the board considers as viable. So so my question is to you is, you know, with all of the land that you own here, are there any deed restrictions on some of the big parcels like the golf courses? Which which, as far as I understand, there was a 10 year agreement that they weren't going to.
That it would stay as a golf course, yep.
Is is there anything preventing the Metro Parks at any point from selling that and developing the land that exists in Hinkley Township?
I would say that it depends on how the land was purchased, right? So we're talking about this that would be purchased through Clean Ohio Conservation Fund. They require certain deed restrictions. There's another program through Ohio EPA um that we purchase land through, they require super specific deed restrictions. Um, some of the land that if we're purchasing it with our own dollars, there aren't, you know, there may not be any deed restrictions because we're not subject to a funding source for it. And so, and then there's other ones like you just mentioned, like as part of the purchase agreement, we're keeping Ironwood as a golf course for for at least 10 years. So it it's um, kind of like she said, it depends who you ask. But it depends on what the funding source was that was used to purchase the land. If it was our own dollars or if it was a grant funding source or if it was a private donation of the land, those would all come with different deed restrictions. So like this one here, we, if we buy this with the grant funds, we have to be subject to the Clean Ohio deed restrictions and those carry on forever. So even if we did sell the property, the ones that are deed restrictions, the deed restrictions have to stay with the property.
Is that something that, you know, because that would probably be beneficial for us to understand here, especially when people abut some of these areas, right? Uh, is is that something that is held with the Metro Parks, is that something with Medina County?
Both, yeah, so I know the deeds all have to be recorded with your recorder if I'm in Medina County, so.
So I can do a little research if I want to find out a little bit more.
Sure, for sure, yeah, definitely.
All right.
Yeah, um, but everything, yeah, just like everything in Cuyahoga County is with the Cuyahoga County Recorder. Everything here is recorded with Medina County Recorder, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's fantastic, I may ask one more.
Yeah.
And make it very quick, I promise. Okay, so uh, I understand, you know, obviously there's conservation, there's the Metro Parks, um, there's a Western Reserve Land Conservancy. And I know that the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, some of the land that they have donated to them or purchased, um, there there is an option, there's a program that exists for them to take that land and to sell it as a a carbon credit or a carbon offset to maybe some of the big polluters, let's just say it was a, there was a steel mill or there was something that needed to to neutralize their their carbon.
Uh huh.
Um, I know that the Western Reserve Land Conservancy again saves, they conserve that land and they'll sell off an acre of carbon credits, whatever that's worth. And I know that the Metro Parks does it as well. Um, do you have any idea, can you share with me? Because I've kind of done a little bit of figuring on my own and it might be wrong. Do you have any idea how much money the Cleveland Metro Parks are bringing in with the carbon credit program?
I don't know what the final number is, I know that we've sold a lot of credits. I do know what that, but I don't know what the number is. I think it's several million so far, um, but I I don't know for sure, I can get that answer. But we have sold credits, um, it's the, it's been active for a couple of years now and it's been successful so far. So, but you know, we're not selling the land.
We sell the credits.
Right, exactly.
So when the land.
So I wanted to make that clear, we're not selling our land.
But but you are getting income, like so from the state acres that you'll get from with the Clean Ohio Grant and then you're all from, you know, our tax dollars that we pay for the 300,000, 304, I think. Um, you you will be able to turn a profit possibly, eventually you'll be able to turn a profit with that.
Yeah, I mean, not all of the land that we have is eligible for the carbon credits.
It's got to be forested.
Yeah, there, it's got to be forested and there there are certain things that make it eligible for for carbon credits, right? So we just can't take Hinkley Lake and sell it as a carbon credit, right? Right, exactly.
So I went through and I did some very, very rough math, very rough math. And and figured out how many, I think it was like 30,000 acres, I believe, somewhere, is it 35 to almost 40,000 acres?
We have 25,000 acres.
25, okay, so it was 25. All right, but but breaking those numbers down with average numbers and and a return back, it it was somewhere in the $20 million range possibly.
But again, not all of those 25,000 acres, right?
I was factoring low, just because I know that there's parking lots, I know that there's lakes, I know that there, but it is, you know, let's just say, it could possibly be somewhere between 10 and 20 million dollars.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would doubt it would be that high just because there's, you know, there's golf courses and there's beaches and there's parking lots and there's buildings and there's a zoo and all that kind of stuff that's also counted as part of the 25,000 acres, yeah.
Ken, is there somewhere he can draft these questions?
Yeah, sure, I mean, we can.
You want to draft those up and we can submit?
That would be great, I think it would be great.
We could get the answers.
And I really genuinely want to thank you for coming here.
Oh, yeah, no.
And answering these questions and and, you know, coming before the board and and everybody here does respect the Metro Park and we appreciate what you bring here, but at the same time, the Metro Parks are a government agency.
Sure.
And and they're one that kind of slips under the radar a little bit with a lot of folks. And and again, so thank you so much, thank you for answering.
Thank you for your questions. My, oh, one more.
You're popular.
I was off the hook.
Almost, sorry, so this is Matt Marzullo, um, so I, I'm a simple man, subtleties often lost on me. Um, so to make sure that I I fully understand this, is the purchase agreement in place?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is necessary or Clean Ohio would not accept your application.
Or you couldn't have gotten the grant.
Right, or even applied for it.
Correct, so the plan for the Metro Parks is to buy the land whether they get a letter or not?
That is what I need to confirm and get back to them. Oh.
The plan is to buy whether there's a letter of approval or not.
A letter of approval or not.
You're either going to pay, what, 304 or 743, something like that?
Right.
744? So one way or the other, the plan is, hey, we're buying this. The first thing you said about why they wanted us to buy it is because it's adjacent to the Metro Parks. Okay.
And those are like.
Wait, 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 wait.
Right.
There's always going to be adjacent to the Metro Park. At what point does the Metro Park say, eh, we got enough of the township?
I mean, that is a question for our CEO and our board, for sure, I mean.
Let's send it back to them.
Yeah, I don't.
See what he comes back to us with.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because you're seeing, we all like the Metro Parks to an extent. You're telling me it brings millions into our community? No, it doesn't, it's taking millions out.
Well, I'm, but that's also voted on by your peoples.
Not when you guys are buying stuff. That, we don't, we don't vote on which parcels you guys buy.
To, to support us as part of your township every year.
Well, absolutely, if something's there and it's taking away, yeah, we want it to be as nice as possible.
Right.
But we don't have any say in, hey, this is how much of our township you're going to control.
But I mean, that's a, we're at the board level.
Okay, well, perhaps they should, perhaps they should have more conversations with us then because there is a lot more, there's a lot more discussion going on in the community than necessarily what we're seeing at a meeting like this. And if the board has better answers, they should probably come down and talk to the people in Hinkley and give us the answers we want.
I mean, I'm sure if an invitation was extended, I don't.
I'm extending it right now.
I can pass on the message.
Great.
But a formal invitation would be better. I think a formal invitation from commissioner to commissioner would be better in that aspect.
I would certainly do that.
Yeah, I mean, you know what I'm saying, I can pass the message on, but that's all I could do, you know, I think coming a commissioner to a commissioner or a CEO, our CEO would be, would be better received than.
I think that's probably a good, a good next step.
Yeah, for sure, because again, I mean, like, you know, if if our CEO was here, he could speak to some of the more long term plans or, you know, the land acquisition strategies that happen that I don't know about, so, um.
Well, and when we know that the Metro Parks are coming and we extend an invitation like that, um, they're generally well attended.
Sure, I would, yeah.
More residents here that have more questions.
Yeah.
That, so I think if that's something we plan for later this year, December, maybe even into next year.
Yeah.
That would be a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you very much.
And you don't have to sit in the hot seat.
I don't mind the hot seat, I just can't answer some of the questions about the AI and the long term land strategies. Those are, those are, I don't know, people say above my pay grade, those ones are above my pay grade. I just do the grant applications. Thank you for having us, I appreciate very much so. And I will follow up with some of the answers, especially about the deed or the purchase agreement to you, Commissioner, and then we could, um.
We really appreciate it.
Go that way.
Thanks, you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Kristen.
Hey, uh, please, I've got nothing pretty done, the capacity of the fire?
Fire. Um, good evening, so as most people probably don't know, but it's Fire Prevention Week. It started October 5th and runs through the 11th. And the theme this year is charging of fire safety. And it talks about the lithium ion batteries and a safety in a charging. There's been quite a few fires in the state from um, batteries, lithium ion batteries and people, when you buy batteries to replace batteries, make sure you buy batteries that are recommended for the product that you're replacing them with on a generic battery. And we are, we did start um, a battery recycle program with, we didn't start it, we're in partnership with the county, solid waste. So we have a bucket fire station by our aluminum can dumpster that you could put your batteries in and we will take them to the county to be recycled. Um, the first item I have on my list is, um, I got two quotes for. Um, request approval for Zadar technology install security cameras at the fire station um, for the purpose of protecting township assets and a property with a cost not to exceed $10,000.
Second.
Discussion.
Um, this is something that Matt and I met with um, Rich, the fiscal officer, a week or two ago.
Yeah, about a week and a half ago, correct.
He was in support of this as well, I think it's a good idea as we are extending um, the security cameras around our township properties. Um, she's, she's mentioned some um, important reasons of why it would be good to have some cameras on that building and we worked very well with Zadar um, with the police department and then also just recently with the town hall cameras. So I would be very comfortable with that.
Same here. Having some uniformity needs support a lot easier, you know, things like that, so.
How many cameras are you looking at?
Five cameras.
Second.
Mm-hmm.
And it ties into the existing system then?
No, we will have a recorder at the fire station.
Would there be a be a D, the one on or?
They'll be able to access, yeah.
All right, um, other favor?
Hi.
My second item on the agenda is, and I I think I wrote it a little bit confusing, but it's sort of two part. Um, I'm requesting approval for Lee Brass to attend the Fire Officer Two class and for him to be reimbursed for $550. Um, he took Fire Officer.
Second.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Now you can explain it.
Okay. He took Fire Officer One class and, which I see there seems to be a billing issue of getting the invoice so we could get it paid. So I just told Lee that, um, if he approved it, just if he would go on and pay for it and then we would reimburse him, it's just easier.
So this was, um, Lee Brass took the.
Fire Officer.
The Fire Officer Gold Training this summer that we approved.
Correct.
Um, and as Chief Payne explained to me, it's, it it was very difficult with the payment. So Lee just went ahead and paid for it out of pocket and um, he got reimbursed from the township. So that's why it's a little bit dicey um, on the, on the agenda. So we wanted to make sure everybody um, understood what he's actually asking for is approval to go to um, Fire.
Officer Two. Officer two.
Two at Tri-C and it's going to be the same process. Lee will pay for it out of pocket. The township will reimburse.
Correct. I, I don't know why it's so hard to get an invoice from Tri-C, but it is.
I appreciate him, um, taking the, the next step, um, to better himself. I think that that benefits the township.
Third item, request approval for W W Williams to replace a pump seal on engine 31 with the cost now to exceed $6,600.
Don't move.
Second.
Question.
That was a hard one. I, do you have, did, I don't know if you guys have any questions about that. We, we discussed it on Friday.
And she explained to me what took place. I talked to him on Friday, so.
On the favor.
Hi.
And then I'm gonna roll the next two in a one, request motion to move Alexander Trinetta and Matt McFadden from probationary firefighter EMT pay rate to regular firefighter EMT pay rate of 1815 hour effective October 12th, 2025.
Don't move.
Second.
In the same time cycle? The same time?
Yeah.
On favor?
I had a couple of meetings where it was four and more than once.
Yes. And then request motion to move Cameron Bott from probationary firefighter paramedic pay rate to regular firefighter paramedic rate at a pay rate of 2250 per hour effective October 12th, 2025.
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion. On favor?
Hi. Welcome back off of probationary for the second time.
For the second time, correct.
Which is because he left and been back to the township, not because we put him back on probation.
And then earlier today I received a resignation. Um, one of our members um, was offered a full-time job for Euclid Fire, South Euclid Fire. He's also in medic school. So, um, he has a family, he's unable to give us a commitment that is needed. So he's requesting a motion to resign. So I'm gonna request a motion to accept Christopher Kirby's resignation effective today, October 7th, 2025.
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion.
So he doesn't want to have two full-time jobs and be in school and have a part-time job?
Correct. I think he's.
Why?
I would say we wish him well and, and thank him for his consideration and, and making, um, letting us know that, you know, he's not gonna be able to.
Make the commitment.
Your deeds, so.
That's it. Hi.
And then the last thing I, it was the monthly summary for September. That completes my agenda.
All right. Any give?
Thank you.
Any further? I'm service.
I have a question for you.
Mm hmm.
Where are we at with the, have we been getting quotes?
Hinkley Roughing was supposed to be sending me a quote out. I actually talked with them today, so.
Tony?
I might've been, I don't remember his name.
I missed a phone call from Tony. So I thought I'm gonna talk to Mike today. He's probably called Tony back. Okay.
He's supposed to be sending me something over, so they could start them and then we got a couple of other people also, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Uh, zoning.
Uh, there's nothing there on zoning or cemetery. So just jump to me.
Angle.
Um, so this, kind of over this long weekend, we, uh, did some, um, network upgrading. And, um, that was all successful eventually. We got some bugs worked out, but it was a, a great team effort.
Late night on Friday?
Yeah, Friday and, yeah, the follow-up issues Monday morning, but they're all resolved. Um, and, uh, one of the huge benefits of this, not only do we have a higher speed backbone, which means faster speeds internally, but we also reconfigured things so that the police department, um, is no longer reliant on township hall being powered up in the event of a long-term power failure. They will, um, be independent of relying on the town hall. So, you know, I know in the past there've been discussions of purchasing a generator for town hall, you know, just to have power so that the police department could be up. Um, this whole bunch of work that took place has now resolved that problem at a far, far lesser cost. So I'm glad that's been completed.
Well, thank you for all of your work on that because I know that, that got a a big chunk.
There's a lot of meshing, you know? So.
One of these days you guys are gonna get over the mesh.
Yep. Um, we originally had scheduled, um, we had planned on doing the phone cut over like tomorrow's date, but that's been pushed back. I, I don't know, Mike, has there been a renewed date set?
Uh, no, we've got a meeting tomorrow at 11:00 AM. So I assume we'll probably know more.
Okay.
For that meeting on the second. I didn't see a seller.
Oh, was there a tentative date suggested?
Uh, we want to be a meeting in March and I think it's.
Uh, well, I, I think after you have your meeting tomorrow, you'd probably come up with an alternative date. So it's been pushed back a couple of weeks. Um, and just a reminder that, uh, we have, um, comprehensive plan, public meetings. See, comprehensive plan, update, public session meetings scheduled for um, October 23rd, 6:30 to 8:30 PM. And Saturday, November 1st, 10 till noon. Um, in addition to the regular comprehensive plan meeting, which is next Wednesday at 6:30. So, um, and those meetings will all take place in here. And that's all. That's like that.
Right, Trustee Ashwell.
Okay. So I have, I'm going to ask move to approve the purchase of $1,226.11 to Direct Marketing Solutions LLC for the annual township newsletter postage.
Second.
Discussion. This is packed out in here? Is that just?
That is, yes, that is. Um, so you'll recall two meetings ago, we approved the purchase of, um, the printing of the newsletter and then also the opt-out. Um, will be a double-sided insert inside the newsletter. This is strictly the postage.
On favor?
I, so, um, goal is that actually they're planning to have that mailed out on Friday, so it should be in everyone's mailbox. Tuesday or Wednesday. Next, we'll start receiving Tuesday, Wednesday. You never know. Um, and also with that opt-out, I just wanna clarify, cause I received some, um, some questions this weekend about the opt-out and that is, the opt-out form is now on our website. Um, it's fillable and you can fill it out on the website. You can start filling that out and turning that in, um, right now. You don't have to wait. Um, and then you have until, I should have written this down. Um, I think it's November 23rd, we have to turn in the opt-out. Did we?
Um.
Close to this.
We did, okay.
Yes.
Um, a gentle reminder to everyone, um, if you have not set up auto payment yet with Brumkey, please do so. Um, I think probably a lot of people just haven't gotten around to it since the new contract started in February, but we do have, um, more delinquents than normal right now. So just a reminder to everybody to set up that auto payment if you have not done that yet. Um, a reminder that our November 4th meeting will be moved to the senior room because of Election Day. And a couple of things not on my agenda. Um, we've had a couple of requests for when we painted and updated the senior room. You'll recall we had to, um, throw out the whiteboard that was in there because it was in very rough shape. We've had a couple of requests, um, specifically from the Girl Scouts wondering if we're going to be putting a whiteboard back up. I sent you both and Rich, um, a couple of options today if we wanted to do it for a 72 by 48 inch, um, whiteboard on Canada. There is one option for $135.96. And then a 72 by 48 magnetic glass board is $269. And I don't know, it seems like glass is better than dry erase. It seems like it would have a longer lifespan than a dry erase board. But presenting you both with options. Our service department is wanting to announce it to the world very safely. But, um, this is something, I think this is just for the public. Now, this is not something we have to go on. This is something we're replacing that was already there. So I wanted to just let you both know where I was at with that. Um, also I'm going to be sending Rich a link for the blinds because I was reminded we have not replaced the blinds in the senior room yet. So I'll be ordering the same ones that we have for the meeting room and then I'll also order them to replace the blinds that were in the boardroom. Uh, the front office ladies are asking. We've done this in the past, so I said that I would discuss it with both of you to make sure that there were no, um, concerns with that. We have Columbus Day, which is, um, a holiday that we observe. They are requesting to work on Columbus Day and flex that day. And instead of, um, having Columbus Day off, they want to have the Friday after Thanksgiving off, which is something that we've done in years past. I said I would ask you both. And then same thing for Veterans Day. They are asking if they keep the office open and work on Veterans Day, if they can have off December 24th.
You know what we did at the beginning of the year then?
So we put that.
Every January they have to re-ask for that. So Mike, they already did this year, so.
Oh, and that was. And, um, Friday, Friday is next Saturday, uh, at Hinkley Park and Tory. Uh, from night until noon. And also our next movie night hosted by the, um, the Fire Association. Thank you very much. We will be showing Wicked on Saturday, October 25th at Our Lady of Grace Church at Dark. So like 7:30 ish. Free for everyone. It's a drive-in movie, so you do not have to worry about keeping warm. But they will not have the building open this year, so plan ahead for. That's it.
Very good. Yeah, nothing for this evening. Uh, any questions from the public?
I can't tell if you're being serious or.
For sure. And how are you, young man?
Very good. Hey, I mean, I, I never get tired. Name recognition, right? So everybody tells me. Uh, John Kalas Ridge Road. Uh, I just wanted to thank, uh, all three of you for, um, you know, taking a position, right? It's not easy to do what you did. Um, and you took a position for the residents of Hinkley Township and I sincerely want to thank you for that.
Anything else? I will move to adjourn at 7:52 PM.
Second.
If you're by Android, on a favor.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.